The meeting is now called to order. Can we please all stand for the flag salute?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. Burke, here. Mr. Sicala?
Here.
Mrs. Dye, here. Mrs. Marinelli, here. And Mr. Mandela?
Here. The New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend the meeting of public bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provisions of this act, the Cedar Grove Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be advertised by having the date, time, and place thereof posted on bulletin boards in the district, published and/or transmitted to the Verona Cedar Grove Times and Star-Ledger newspapers, filed with the township clerk, and posted on the district's website. The meeting is open to the public for comments for items on the agenda. Seeing none, I close that portion of the meeting. Committee reports? Any? None?
Well, I went to tree lighting last night and just to mention that.
That's a committee report?
No, it's not. But Ms. Jessen was there with the high school choir and they provided some very nice entertainment while we were in line for Santa Claus. So, since there were no other reports, I'll mention that and thank you, Ms. Jessen, for singing.
Filling in our committee area. No, I just noticed the tree tonight. It looks really nice, too, and then I realized it was last night. New York says tonight, right? The big one in New York?
Tomorrow.
That was last night?
No, it's tomorrow, Wednesday.
Oh, it's tomorrow? Oh, there you go.
I thought it was last night.
I thought it was tonight.
That was secret.
Okay, moving on the agenda. We have two presentations tonight. The first, we'll hear from Paul Lurch, as always, good to see you.
Good to see you, too.
To review our audit results.
Okay, well, good evening.
Good evening.
Once again, we're back to present the audit for the Cedar Grove Public Schools for the year ending June 30th, 2013. Just as you received last year, there are two reports each board member should receive the larger of the two. That's the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report. That report has the financial information. It has an introductory section, management discussion and analysis. It has the auditor's opinion. You have, the language changed slightly this year. We were always going off of an unqualified opinion. Now, we're unmodified. So, the language changed slightly. It doesn't really mean anything. You have a clean opinion. The financial statements are in there. We'll talk a little bit about the surplus as I go through that. You have the statistical data that's in there, and that statistical data is generally over a 10-year period, and it's a great tool if somebody comes into the district and says, can you know, to the superintendent's office and says, can you please give me a little, shed a little light as to Cedar Grove, what the school's about, what the town is about, and because of that historical demographic information, not only just school information. So, it's a great document in that respect. Also, we have the single audit section in there, too. Any school board that has more than $500,000 of either federal or state is required to have a single audit. What that simply means is that we're required to audit specific grants that you received as a district. We were subject to a state single audit here. Generally, almost every district in the state is, only because of the amount of state aid that most districts get that exceeds that $500,000 level. And then, everybody should have received the smaller of the two reports, and that is, again, a specific report, which is guided by the state of New Jersey and its format, and that's where we talk about comments, recommendations. So, what I want to do first is just go over surplus with everybody a little bit, and then I'm going to work out of the larger of the two reports. And I'm going to go to page, I'm going to go to page 63.
You didn't bring it?
It's okay.
Sorry.
Go wing it.
It's actually in my car. I forgot to bring it in.
63 is a culmination of your revenues, less your expenditures, for the fiscal year that we just ended. It also shows a comparison of your budget compared to actual, so you can see variances as far as that's concerned. If you look at the actual column on the bottom here, you can see that at the end of the fund year, that the total fund balance in our general fund, which is the operating fund, was $4,117,843. An increase from the prior year of $958,850. And it's comprised of various components. Those components, and what I will do is I will start from the bottom up a little bit because I think it's just a little easier. The unassigned fund balance, $804,000. You, as a school district, are limited to retaining 2% of your fund balance. Now, there are adjustments to that number, and we do have an adjustment here, which is the amount of extraordinary aid that was not anticipated in the budget. But generally speaking, it's 2% of your operating expenditures. And that's the 804,000. That is your maximum amount. So, any amount that you retain that's in excess of this 804 is going to be given back in a form of tax relief. It's going to be identified on the report as excess surplus. So, if you look a little bit up, you can see excess surplus is $780,000. That represents the amount that we are over the 2% plus or minus our adjustments. That $780,000 will be used when you balance, when you develop your budget for 1415. If you go up one line above that, you can see excess surplus designated. When we were here last year, we talked about the excess surplus last year, and that was the 215. So, last year, we were 215,000 above the maximum permitted, and you also, then, when you develop the budget, which we're currently in, which is 1314, you also added an amount that is identified as designated for subsequent year, which is the amount that's being utilized in the current budget. So, long story short, in the current year we're in, 1314, you are utilizing roughly $795,000 of surplus to balance the budget. Next year, you'll have to utilize 780, very consistent. So, I think that's one of the key elements here, when you're looking at excess surplus and the amount that you've put into those subsequent years as utilization. The only other item we didn't talk, there are two other items that we didn't talk about. One is capital reserve. Capital reserve started out at $1,250,000. The board did a resolution transferring in $400,000 of excess surplus, and during the year, you utilized 100,000. So, it was a net change of 300-plus. And so, now, we're sitting here with $1,555,997 in capital reserve, and that money is earmarked for long-range facility plan items. The only other item we didn't discuss is the year-end encumbrances of $181,000 assigned. Encumbrances are goods and orders that were placed yet not delivered. Prime example would be Lurch, Francine Higgins. We entered into a contract well before I did the audit. So, at the end of, you know, prior to June 30th, you encumbered the goods, but obviously, we didn't perform the services until recently, so that's why it's an encumbrance. Had the services been performed prior to the end of the year, it would have been an accounts payable and would have been listed as an expense. And that's really the entire difference here. I don't know if anybody has any questions on the surplus. Otherwise, I'll just go to the comments or recommendations. We only have two. Okay? Okay. So, having said that, in the smaller of the two reports, we only have two comments to deal with, and they, I shouldn't say they both deal with student activities. One is more of a student activity comment. The other one is more of an athletics comment. The first one that we're dealing with was student activities. When we do, when we do our testing and we, without going through the details of all the testing that we do and all the specific areas, but we do quite a bit of it, some of it is certainly substantive and some of it is random. But in student activities, we go through and we do a walkthrough, and then we also go ahead and pick some of the larger dollar values as well. There was a purchase which exceeded the $5,600 threshold, which is the quote threshold for the purchase of music equipment for a specific play or musical. That was done without having quotes obtained. I mean, we asked for them. They weren't given to us. So, I don't, again, I think anything that's exceeding the 5,600, common sense would say to go out and have that quoted as well. Okay? The only other comment deals with athletics. Athletic payments, certain athletic payments were made for referees, I believe, were made as part of the cash collections. And so, obviously, that's a no-no. We want a trail. We want all the collections to be grossed up so we can identify through our process, which is taking the tickets, multiplying them times the rate, and doing a proof of each event is what we do. And when we were doing that, we realized that there were certain cash collected and that certain payments were made out of those cash collections. So, again, it should really go through the system. Any of those payments should be done by check, should be approved and signed off. So, that's the only other comment. Other than that, I don't know if anybody has any questions on those. Sure.
I have two questions.
Sure.
The first one is the first comment you made about the purchase, and you said anything above 5,600. Which, how much was the total, just out of curiosity? Do you know?
I don't have that information in front of me. I don't remember, honestly.
Okay.
I can let you know tomorrow.
All right. I was just curious, was it like 6,000 or was it like 10 or like?
I think it was below 10, if my memory serves me. I'm just.
Okay, nope, that's fine.
Going crazy with everything that's going on. I'm going to guess it was somewhere around 7 or so.
Okay. And then, my second question, as far as the game officials being paid. Did you notice that in more than one instance, or was it just like a one-time event that you noticed it?
It was, it was more than once. It was part of that selection process that we went through.
Okay.
We didn't go through, we didn't look, check everyone, obviously.
Right. I was just curious if it was only one time you found it or if you found it a few times?
We found it a few times.
Okay.
Did we have a comment last year regarding that activity as well?
You did not. You did not, no, no.
In the last couple of years, I saw it?
Not that I recall.
Okay.
No, no. You have to remember, it's part of a random selection.
Right.
Right.
Yeah, you know, we're going to typically do a walkthrough, which is really a different term for kind of an internal control evaluation. So, what we do is part of a walkthrough is we'll determine what are the proper controls, what controls you have in place, and then we test that transaction. So, we'll walk through that particular activity and verify that the transactions are working. So, we found that through the walkthrough process that we had an exception here, and then we wound up pulling a couple more.
You know, what I remember was it was holding on to cash too long, right?
Oh, yeah, that sounds familiar, yep.
But it was that same department.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, you know, severity-wise, both of these comments are not severe, clearly. You know, they're not material, they're not significant, but this is the kind of stuff we want to bring up to your attention as we go through and find different areas that we've come across. I'm finished. I mean, obviously, you can tell from the audit report itself with these two benign comments that your administrative team is certainly doing an excellent job. I mean, I think everybody should, you know, be aware of that, and you probably are, but I just wanted to point that out.
I'm still trying to wait for the year when we have none.
It seems every year we have, we always have one or two. It's like, I'm waiting for the year where there's none.
Then you'd be like, oh, are you doing your job?
Do you see that much?
You know, it does happen occasionally.
But you see no comments?
It does.
Not very often.
It does, and it, you know.
Don't worry, we'll renew you the next year.
It does happen occasionally, yeah. Any questions?
I smell a merit goal here.
I'm not going there. Well, thank you. Everyone have a great holiday.
No, thank you.
Thank you.
We appreciate the being here and being able to serve Cedar Grove.
No, it's great. Thanks. Always good seeing you.
Yep, good night, everyone.
Thank you.
Okay, our next presentation is regarding competition cheerleading trip, and we have Jennifer Noto's here. Yes, good to see you.
Good to see you. Good evening. My name's Jennifer Noto. I am the varsity cheerleading coach at the high school, and we're here tonight to ask permission from the board if the cheerleaders could participate in the Can-Am Cheerleading National Championships in Myrtle Beach, South Carolina. The trip is in March. It's March 14th through the 17th. I'll just give you a run-through of how it would go. We plan to leave Friday in the morning, and when we get to South Carolina, we would have a team practice, and then that night, the competition hosts a pep rally for all the teams that are participating. It's in the convention center. And we also learned that there's like a chance for the girls to do individualized competitions, too. Like, we can enter up to three girls to do like, for the best jumps, the best tumbling, and the best stunts. They also have something for the parents if they want to do it, but, you know, who knows? And then, Saturday and Sunday, the team has to compete both days. Saturday and Sunday would be all day in the convention center. The team competes Saturday. We wait for our standings, and they take half of that score, and then they combine it with Sunday's score. We compete again, same, against the same teams, and then they determine the winner Sunday. And then, Monday morning, we would fly home. So, that would be our plan. We've been fundraising in hopes to go, and we actually have a lot of parents, I think, almost all of them on the team, that would like to come and chaperone, so that's great. There's actually 16 chaperones, including the two coaches, and there are 16 girls on the team, so we have a one-to-one ratio. So, which is great because in last year, we did a, like a day trip to a national Atlantic City, and all the parents came and the siblings, and it was great. And we also, they all came to us to Trenton when we won the state championship, so we're really trying to push the team ahead, and I think bringing them to Myrtle Beach would be a great experience for the team. It's a well-known competition for high schools. There's a lot of high schools that go there. It's centered for high schools, and they'd be competing against teams all throughout the country. And there's actually a program they have, and we're planning hopefully to sign up for it, that they would match us up with a team from another state, and then we would meet up Friday night, and the girls would get to know each other, and they do a T-shirt exchange. So, we'd get T-shirts that say Cedar Grove, New Jersey, and they'd give us whoever our partners are from another state, and it'd be a good chance for them to make some new friends for the seniors, too, if they go off to college, and just network a little bit in the cheerleading world. So, I'd like to answer any questions about the trip.
No, the only comment that I have, because I don't know if you get feedback from the buzz in the community. The only thing that I, everyone is, I mean, I'm always supportive of these kind of things. I think it's a great educational experience. Not only that, socially, everything, I think it's a great experience. I just think that some of the parents were concerned because of the trip not being announced earlier, and there's some crossover in some of the spring sports, and some of the parents are not happy with the way, the timing of the trip, because some of the students are missing out on some of their other activities. So, maybe it's, you know, in the future, if we could just look at trying to have conversations, you know, earlier, so that way, that's just some of the buzz around the community with some of the parents. So, I just wanted to make note of that because, like I said, I'm always in support of these things, and I just would hate for the student to miss out on any of their other activities that may be going on, so.
We actually, last week, I sat down with Dr. Cutler and Mr. Mangili and the softball coach, because that seemed to be where the crossover was, and we spoke about it, and he supported our trip because the softball season technically didn't start till April, so.
But they're missing some practices and some stuff.
It would be a scrimmage and one practice.
Yeah. So, just, you know, I just try to keep everybody abreast of the buzz that goes on. So, you know, the, this stuff is, to me, is all positive things.
Right.
So, and I just like to keep them positive, so, because I remember last year's experience, and then when we saw the tape when you guys came back was, you know, phenomenal.
Thank you.
So, it's a great thing. So, I like that these, you know, the more they do, it's awesome, so.
But this is a set date, right? It's not a.
Yeah, we can't pick, yeah.
It's based on.
No, there's other competitions you could pick.
Yeah. We chose to go to Myrtle Beach because of how big it is. Like, we, like, to spend the money and go to Florida or even like, everywhere, and go against one team, it's not really worth it for them. So, now, I know, in Myrtle Beach, it's known for the size, and we want to go and compete against a substantial amount of teams.
Right.
So, and I think.
They're going to, because that event.
Yeah, for that specific event, and it's catered to high school. Like, when we went to Atlantic City last year, there was a lot of all-star teams, which are private teams, and I, like, they didn't cater to the high school needs, and it's a different, it's like a all-star, like, baseball, I'm not sure what they call those, like the, yeah, club teams compared to high school. So, it really wasn't the best experience. It was a great experience, but I mean, for the sport-wise, there'd be more competition in Myrtle Beach. That's why we chose that one.
So, we'll be in the top three, right?
I hope so. I hope we're number one.
Good luck. It's going to be great.
Now, I'd like to just comment on that, Jen, and point out that this was handled very well. There were some concerns that were out there. The concerns were brought to the school district. We scheduled a meeting, and the appropriate people met and talked it through, and we're all now on the same page. So, I want to commend the community and the administrative team and our coaching staff for, you know, following through with this and talking things out and ultimately being supportive of one another's programs, so, nice job.
Thank you. I appreciate the support from the school for setting everything up.
Yeah, it's awesome.
So, we're hoping for the best.
Yeah, good luck.
Thank you.
And we hope to see a tape this time, too.
I guess we're moving on the agenda. From the Office of the Business Administrator and Board Secretary, under minutes, may I have a motion for B1, and that's to approve the public and executive minutes of November 12th?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Sicala?
Yes.
Mrs. Dye?
I wasn't at the meeting on November 12th, so I'm going to recuse myself.
Mrs. Marinelli?
Aye.
And Mr. Mandela?
Aye. Under business, may I have a motion for B2 through B14? And that's a motion to approve the budgetary transfers for the month of November, a motion to approve the treasurer's report for the months of July and August of 2013, motion to approve the board secretary's certification to the Cedar Grove Board of Education that no line count has expenditures. B5 is a motion to accept the Cedar Grove Board of Education Comprehensive Annual Financial Report as of June 30th, 2013, with the recommendations that we've heard. B6 is a motion to approve the corrective action plan for the 630, 2013 audit. That was the two items that Mr. Lurch reviewed with us. B7 is a motion to approve the termination of the copier lease agreement for two, seven copier models, and it's also to approve the lease agreement with United Business Systems for two Canon copiers for 60 months at the expense listed. B8 is a motion to appoint, the appointment of Envero Vision Consultants of North, of Hawthorne, New Jersey as our environment own safety consultant. B9 is a motion to approve Aheira Consultants to perform annual indoor microbio assessments. That's indoor air quality screening for asbestos and mold, air testing. B10 is a motion to approve NAE TI, which is the National Asbestos and Environmental Testing Institute, to provide environmental consultant professional services for the annual cost, not to exceed the number listed. B11 is a motion to retroactively approve the Cedar Grove Police Department to use Memorial Middle School for the state police training for the hours that are listed. B12 is a motion to approve the Cedar Grove Junior Women's Club to use a Cedar Grove High School cafeteria for their annual breakfast with Santa on December 7th, Saturday, December 7th. That's this upcoming Saturday. B13 is a motion to accept the generous donation of a wrestling mat from the Cedar Grove Junior Wrestling Booster Club and the Cedar Grove High School Booster Club. And B14 is a motion to accept the Middle State's Commissions on Elementary and Secondary Schools midterm report completed for Cedar Grove High School.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
I just had a question on B11. Was there a date associated with that?
Yes, the training took place the Friday after, during teachers' convention weekend. They were there Friday afternoon and early evening.
Thanks.
Sure.
And on B8, just by way of clarification, we're rescinding B23 for May 14th. This is at a cost of $25,870. That's, that's what we would have paid if we hadn't rescinded, right? We're not paying to rescind.
No, that's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Sicala?
Yes.
Mrs. Dye?
Yes.
Mrs. Marinelli?
Aye.
And Mr. Mandela?
Aye. I guess we have our Rebecca tonight.
Hi.
How are you? Good to see you.
I'm good, how are you? I've got a lot of things today.
You do?
Yes. So, first thing I want to talk about is we have two clubs, the Italian Club and the Irish Club, and right before Thanksgiving, they both did food drives, and they're both very successful. And as of right now, the Irish Club is doing a toy drive, which is another one of their annual fundraisers for shelters and people in need. Our winter ball is next Friday, what I've been talking about for a couple of months now, I'm very excited. And as Mr. Sicala said, the choir sang at town hall last night. I was there, it was very nice. We had an introduction of the travel club last week, which is a new club that Ms. Jessen, Mr. Canello, and Mr. Rocco have come up with to take some students for next year on some trips. They're talking about it. It's gonna, it's a, an idea that's starting to try to happen. The Muse Department Concert is December 18th, and the middle school choir, the middle school's concert is December 12th, which is next week. All winter sports started this week. I know basketball started yesterday, I'm not sure when track starts. Track the Musical just had its final auditions for the kids, so all of the middle, third to eighth graders auditioned, and we had our very first rehearsals today. And Lip Sync is in a month from next Tuesday, so lots of time, lots of things going on. You're going to have a good winter.
Yeah, fun stuff. Really fun stuff. Thanks for being with us.
Happy to be here.
Enjoy the break, use some time off. Okay, and I guess moving on the agenda, under personnel, may I have a motion for S1 through S... 15? 16? S16. And that's a motion to retroactively approve Tony and Venero's resignation as paraprofessional aide at South End. It's a motion to approve David Bukino, South End Paraprofessional, effective December 4th. Motion to approve the transfer of Mr. Jetner Russmulli from Memorial Middle School to Cedar Grove High School. It's a motion to appoint the staff as listed with the emergent hiring procedures. S5 is a motion to retroactively approve the instructors as listed and needed to implement the reading and writing pathways and CLB program. S6 is a motion to approve student number 1000000084, who currently attends North End School to continue through the end of the school year. S7 is a motion to approve Erica Saron, 5th grade language arts teacher. Approval to participate in 150-hour internship to complete it at South End, working alongside media specialist Tracy Riley. S8 is a motion to approve on second reading to allow the Cedar Grove High School AP US History and AP Government Politics classes to travel to Washington, DC in May. S9 is a motion to approve on second reading to allow the Cedar Grove High School Band and Choir to travel to Disney World in Orlando, Florida in May as well. S10 is a motion to approve upon first reading the proposal to allow the Cedar Grove High School Varsity Competition Cheerleading Team to participate in CHEER LTD's National Cheerleading Competition in Myrtle Beach. S11 is a motion to reimburse the school-based volunteers as listed for their fingerprinting expenses per our policy. S12 is a motion to approve the list of school volunteers. S13 is a motion to authorize the attendance at the events that are listed. S14 is a motion to approve the leave of absences for personnel as listed, and S15 is a motion